All right, it is seven oh one by my clock and we will call to order the Tuesday, November fifteenth, twenty twenty-two city council meeting. Let's go ahead and start with roll call.
Councilman Becker?
Here.
Councilman Hartwick?
Here.
Councilman Johnson?
Here.
Councilman Schultz?
Here.
President Shear?
Here. Agenda item three this evening will be public hearings. This evening we have none. Agenda item four will be public comment. As a reminder, the city council will receive comments from city residents. Comments are generally limited to three minutes per individual. Anyone wishing to speak is required to sign up in advance or state the following items for the record when called upon. That would be your name, address, subject matter, and contact information. No action will be taken on any public comments unless the item is also elsewhere on the agenda. We do have one person signed up in person, so we will start with Joe Grams. You'll head up to the podium and then state your name, address, and on the subject matter you are wishing to speak on.
Joe Grams. Ford Atkinson, Rowan Ford Zeta Street. And my complaint is about Hammerses Pond. They told me that though. Well, first of all, I bought my house. It was a nice, quiet, dead-end street. Well, they took care of that. They got hot. Now it's a high-traffic crime area. I got cars running up and down my street. I got loud music playing from the whatever that place is. And they told me that they were gonna go and put those evergreen trees across the front of the property. Which they did not do, because they moved the parking lot over. Now, but they're still using it as a parking lot. So I got during the summer, it was blocking some of the cars that I see in the parking lot. Some of the headlights shining in my house. Now that winter's here, I can see the parking lot. I got the headlights shining in my house. So I want to know if you're gonna do something about the light pollution laws in the state of Wisconsin with interrupts interferes with enjoyment of my property. And I want them to plant those trees. They said that now the parking lot is just an overflow. So they don't have to put the trees there. They can shine their lights in my house if they want to. I want to put a stop to that. Can you be something be done?
So we can't answer questions directly, but we will record all of this and then our city of our city staff will reach out.
Okay, can I park cars on my grass in front of my house? Is that legal or against law?
Again, during public comment, we're not allowed to answer questions.
Okay, so they're parking cars on the grass across the street. So they shouldn't be able allowed to do that either if I can't do it.
Again, we will register all the the items that you have listed and then we will do a deep dive into this and our city staff will get back to you in a timely matter. Again, we just can't comment directly on any of this during a public comment session, so.
You don't want me to get upset and have a heart attack?
Well, we definitely don't want to have that. But we do appreciate you providing feedback and we will no doubt investigate this and figure out how to correct some of it.
Thank you.
Sir, you didn't provide your phone number. You didn't remember it at the time. Can you follow up with us? Can you stop in City Hall and provide your phone number?
I don't know how to do this.
Okay.
If you figure out throughout the night, what we'll do is can we can we set this back outside and then you can actually fill out your phone number on that sheet?
Wrong side.
Yep.
Okay. On text.
Not on public comment.
I shake too much. I should be at the very top, Joel. My contacts. I'm not sure. I can't see it on the phone.
Yeah.
Okay. Alright, thank you.
Thank you, Joe. There's nobody else signed up in person, but what I would what I will do is open the floor. So this will be a first call for public comment either in person or via Zoom. This is a second call for public comment. This is a third and final call for public comment. Seeing none, hearing none, we will move right along. Agenda item number five this evening is the consent agenda. Just as a reminder, the consent agenda that is outlined is presented for action by the city council. Items may be removed from the consent agenda on the request of any one council member. Items not removed may be adopted by one action without debate. Removed items may be taken up either immediately after the consent agenda or placed later on the agenda at the discretion of the council president.
I would move to approve the consent agenda as listed.
Second.
I am going to make my usual disclaimer that there are events listed on here that have been requested by the Fort Atkinson Chamber of Commerce. I am the sitting board president of the Chamber of Commerce. However, none of these events benefit me in any financial or personal matters, so I just want to throw that out as a disclaimer. We do have a motion and a second. All of those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Agenda item six is petitions, requests, and communications. Six A is the presentation relating to the concept plans and cost estimates of a new city of Fort Atkinson Public Works Operations Facility.
Okay. With the memo that you were that I submitted to you, all I provided the plans and spreadsheets breaking down some costs pertaining to each development. So what I want to do is just go through briefly kind of each location and the existing location a little bit and kind of break out the the bullet points from the the submittals. So as the council is aware, the existing Public Works Operations Facility is more than fifty years old and has surpassed its useful life. This fact led the council to approve a full campus facility evaluation and study originally prepared in twenty seventeen and and a current twenty twenty-two existing facility review and concept plan for two locations owned by the city. The city council at the June twenty-first, twenty twenty-two meeting approved the submitted bid proposal from Ingberg Anderson Architects for the planning and preparation of two public works facility concept plans. The two selected locations include the existing Public Works Facility Campus at seven hundred James Place and the Loeb Lorman Site at one fifteen Lorman Street. So city staff worked very closely with Ingberg Anderson and Jeff Wartell, the lead architect on this project to break down both locations to discuss at length the twenty seventeen plan that was produced back in twenty seventeen for the Public Works Facility. So I'll break through by a few slides. We'll go through a few of the bullet points for each location. The existing Public Works Facility you'll see here consists of these two locations, one just south of James Place and the larger area where the campus is north of James Place. The main office itself was built in the early fifties and that's in the lower right-hand corner of the upper lot. The north building, which is due north of the main campus there was built in the late nineteen sixties that houses all of our heavy equipment and a variety of small pieces of equipment. And the west building is was built in the early nineteen eighties and that houses the parks staff, the parks supplies and equipment, and also some other heavy equipment that we have available for the Public Works Facility. What we're suffering from now in this current facility are a lot of age-related rapid deterioration and rising maintenance costs. Being built in the fifties, it is insulated, but it's tough to maintain heat within the facility. And we are now suffering from some of those deteriorations that have taken place over the last twenty or thirty years. This particular facility requires major structural and environmental controls upgrades in order to maintain its viability to the city. The state of Wisconsin, excuse me, has has sent a letter several times in the last two years concerning our existing fuel system and they are requiring that we determine an upgrade time and timeframe to replace the tanks on the fuel system that we have in place. So it was installed in the early seventies. And the other the other bullet point on this one is it's just has it's provides a very unhealthy environment for the employees to work in. We have a lot of roof leaks and a lot of issues pertaining to those leaks. There with me here. There we go. So what I did was I took a few slides just to kind of make anybody who is sitting in on the meeting that's not aware of what the facility is, what it looks like. I took a few pictures to kind of document what the current situation is down there. On the upper left-hand corner, you'll see the main office exterior and then the several pictures surrounding that pertain to that main office location. Directly to the right of the main office, front desk is the supervisor's office. And in those locations, you'll see a lot of water damage, deteriorated tiles. And that occurs every time it rains and we've had the roof patch several times in the last several years. You'll see the electrical panel. There's a lot of serious water damage over the last ten to fifteen years. And there's a close-up of that panel with the insulation directly above it, very saturated. We do have that area, I think, sealed off for the better part right now, but it having water leaking over that panel is pretty serious. The upper right-hand corner, you'll see the existing break room, locker room, muster room, meeting room that we have available and that picture down below represents that area. That's where we meet every morning to muster the crews for the daily work. That's their lunch area. That's their locker room and it's also the restroom. So the first site we looked at is the Loeb Lorman Site. I think everyone's familiar with the fact the city acquired that in twenty-one or twenty-two as part of a blight elimination and reclamation project. That site was acquired really with a possibility of future redevelopment. On that site is several existing structures, two main large buildings and several small outbuildings along with many standing foundations. Those structures are, I guess, due to be removed sometime November, December of this year. The site does have some soil contamination on it and the DNR and Department of Administration are currently working with the city on that right now. So from a redevelopment standpoint, this is a conceptual layout of what a new facility would look like on that parcel. The buildings are due again to be removed in November, December of this year that currently exist, so the redevelopment would take place after that point. The grant money that were the grant funds that were used to acquire this will require the city to wait five years to redevelop this property for city use. But we do plan, we would plan a design in twenty-six and a break ground date of sometime in twenty twenty-eight. I think some of the things to be concerned about would be, of course, the increased construction costs during the waiting period. I think we've noticed over the last several years, those costs escalate rather quickly and the market is a bit volatile. The existing facility does require extensive repairs to remain functional. The roof system itself over the main office then includes the garage area and the break area. That's going to require near plus or minus one hundred thousand dollars worth of repairs to prevent any more further leaking. And the environmental control systems, which would be the air exchangers, the air handlers and the heating units, those need serious upgrade and those will take some investigation to determine cost on that. So this is a cost breakdown and estimate of of possible costs for construction in this location. So the Lorman Site, you'll see the total grand total, you'll see there's several columns there. The grand total for twenty twenty-two is an estimate that was established based upon several current projects that ran for twenty twenty-two and constructed in twenty twenty-two. So the grand total comes out to about twenty-one million, four hundred thousand dollars. And that will get us about seventy-two thousand eight hundred seventy-two thousand, six, seven hundred square feet of total storage space within that location. One thing I think you should note is the two different spreadsheets. Many of the costs are the same to construct the facilities. So you'll notice in twenty twenty-two, the office, the main top five areas, office, vehicle storage, vehicle maintenance and departmental shops and wash bay. All are consistent costs between the two spreadsheets. The variable costs will be the new cold storage building on the Lorman Site will be constructed from the ground up. And the site amenities, which will be all the site improvements, all the underground utilities, grading, paving, anything outside of the vertical structure of the building. So the existing facility, this is where we are located now. This facility, I believe, is functional and can remain functional during construction. Pushing the structure to the far north end of the development, I think we can keep the garage and main office area open and functional during the construction process. It eliminates any extended facility investment. There will be some minor investments to maintain the facility during development or design and construction. However, mass investment will not have to take place. It definitely accelerates the improvement time, so we're looking at a design schedule sometime in twenty twenty-three and a break ground hopefully in around twenty twenty-four. Again, this this site will require some additional land acquisition by adjacent landowners and from adjacent landowners and also a possible roadway vacation to the south side of the property. So south of the existing cold storage building, there's an existing road there that we would plan to vacate. And again, this is the final bullet point. This is our preferred option. So breaking down the costs here, the last slide, I think the grand total was somewhere in the vicinity of between twenty-one, five and twenty-two million dollars. This site is slightly less expensive due to the fact that we'll be reusing the existing cold storage building on the west side of the facility. The new cold storage building would would be in the approximate location of the northwest corner of the facility and range at about three thousand square feet. Site amenities and improvements are slightly less on this particular facility for development shown on the spreadsheet there. And a grand total of about eighteen million, eight hundred thousand to build in twenty twenty-two. Two things to note on that, obviously, we aren't building in twenty twenty-two, but it's a good representation of actual costs, facilities of this size being built in this year. The architect did put in a twenty twenty-three construction escalation column to show approximate escalated prices waiting for the twenty twenty-three construction year. That takes that cost up to about twenty-two million, nine hundred thousand total. So I think just to summarize summarize real quickly between the Lorman and the existing site, the Lorman Property, the pros on that site, obviously, it's it's a it's a large rectangular location, which is slightly slightly less complicated to develop. It does allow for future expansion. I think I think some of the major cons are the five-year waiting period. Some of the unknowns in that is obviously escalating costs of construction. We know that obviously costs every year go up. What exactly that will amount to is a little bit of the unknown. And there is a a pretty hefty investment in the existing facility to stay where we are located for five years before we break ground. I think on the existing site, again, it's our preferred option. Staff looked at this. We've reviewed this quite heavily. Pros on this is we are reusing existing west building. That site, that building is still good. It can be fit to to fit our needs here into the future. Construction timeline is greatly shortened and that reduces our costs to maintain the facility for use and habitation. And the cons on that, of course, we do have a little bit of a limited future expansion. Expansion is possible, however, the shape of the lot makes it slightly more complicated than a simple square lot to develop. And that's pretty much all I have for you. I think staff would recommend no action need to be taken here from the council tonight. This is just an informative session for you all along with the submittals, but staff would would certainly recommend that we we move forward with the existing redevelopment of the existing location.
And and I'll just add that, you know, staying on site is our preferred option due to the schedule for construction repairs needed to the current facility. And we really do want to continue to instill pride in our employees and we we really can't our expect our folks to be positive, productive ambassadors for the city if we are, when they're getting rained on inside of their facility in addition to what we expect them to do outside, which is the majority of their job. So as as Tom indicated, we don't, we're not asking the council for any action tonight. But if you can think of additional information that you might want to to review prior to the December twentieth meeting, please let us know and we will come back on December twentieth with any additional information you might want to review. And then at that point, we will be requesting that the council come to consensus on on which option to to pursue.
I think it would be nice knowing that at the existing location there would be probably a plan, as you noted, to vacate that street there.
Yeah.
I think just any communication or information that's been had with businesses or, you know, homeowners residents in that area of potential conflicts or issues that could arise from that, I think, would be would be nice to at least have a little a little information on that.
Yeah, I will let the council know that we have spoken with the fireside. We met with the Glock six and they were receptive to the to the concept, so they they didn't express any serious concerns, but I will document all that and provide that to you before the next meeting.
Maybe we could have a immunity open house for those who are
Fantastic.
Any curiosity about as to why this conversation is is happening or why this project proposal is coming up. I think it it would be nice to let people know that those doors are open for any.
Yeah, I'm happy to host anytime.
Eyes on it, so.
I will reiterate that I believe all five of us have walked through the DPW, if not once, multiple times and it is unfortunately a city building that we should take more pride in and have not. And it is not a place that we necessarily want to say this is where you need to go work every day. So this is a conversation that I I feel we knew was coming. I have one question regarding just potential land acquisition, if necessary. Are there opportunities for potential growth within the current site that's the preferred site?
Meaning expanding from there into the future? I think this design itself will take us out the next twenty-five years, thirty years, and there is room on that site after this redevelopment takes place to grow for another ten possible years. There is expansion room on the site. Again, it 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 needs to be considered that the site is a is a slightly odd shape and it creates some issues, but it is expandable and it certainly is, it will grow with us.
One of the perks was the use of an existing building. Does that have the same timeline as the rest of it? Or is it gonna need to be redone?
So there's some
Into the future, five years into the future.
If you look into the, if you look at the spreadsheet, the way it's broken, they, we did make some considerations for upgrading that building that that building to maintain its use into the future. So there is some, there is some consideration in the budget for necessary upgrades just to to get that building kind of up to today's standards and and bring it into the future without having to have a mass reconstruction of that building also in the in the future.
Its purpose is was vehicle storage?
Yeah, it'll be, it'll serve as, it'll serve as cold storage, moderate temperature controlled storage is what it'll be. So there'll be some vehicles in there, there'll be some trailers in there. The plan overall is to use that that space for for the overflow of and growth of the of the facility as we go.
That would suggest to me that the upgrades necessary would have economically be more feasible than an upgrade in something else that.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
For the site plan that you have, does this add additional indoor vehicle storage or it looks like all these are already
So the
Labeled.
Yeah, the site plan that you have there is a representation for all of you, but for staff also to let staff know that that every piece of equipment is accounted for in all the areas that we'll have available to ourselves. We are continuously evolving the department as we go along here, so there is room for for extra parking in there. There are several spaces that are still available. And there are several pieces of equipment that will be that will be moving through the facility that we will no longer need, so those spaces will open for us. I think one of the things to consider and the reason I asked them to show it that way is just so everyone can see that the the vehicles as size represented and and the amount of those vehicles all fit within that facility. So currently, the buildings that we have on the existing site amount to about thirty-nine thousand square feet and will be the singular building on the north line of their of the facility there, the brand-new building will represent roughly about, I believe, sixty-seven thousand square feet if 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 I'm not mistaken. So we're literally doubling, almost doubling the size of just one individual building and still maintaining another fifteen thousand square feet of extra storage, so I think that 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 will serve us for the next twenty or thirty years.
Um, the only other comment I had was just, and I know that obviously a lot of this would be ballparking on your part, but knowing that the Lorman Site would require that five-year waiting, if there's any way to build out a little bit more what you think those expenses would be of what would still need to happen at the existing facility during that timeframe? Again, I know some of that, you know.
Really for us, it'll be it'll be the mechanical side of things, so it'll be the the HVAC units, the air exchangers and especially the the air exchanger units for the for the actual service bays. Those need a major overhaul. But I can get you, I can get you good, yeah, I can get you good solid numbers on that.
Would be of the investment that would still need to be made there.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Thank you.
I just want to say, I know I've said this before, but I just think it's interesting. I actually had a conversation with something tonight. Was a long-time resident of the city for many decades and had no familiarity with with the site. I think that's indicative of of many of us in town. You guys go out and do your jobs every single day and it's it's kind of out of sight and out of mind and I think our city for so long prided ourselves on stretching every dollar and getting as much value of all those facilities we could and now those dollars have literally ripped in half and we really have to make some some tough choices, but I really think this approach is a sensible one that that you guys are taking. Like council member Hartwick, I'd like to know what it might take over the next five years, but at the end of the day, I don't know if it makes sense to to kind of throw good money at good bad if we're just gonna build me something anyways. But I appreciate the information and the due diligence that's happened during this process.
We will also agree with that. We've recently had conversations with people at the League of Wisconsin Municipalities Annual Conference and they were dealing with this in other communities and we were seeing numbers that fell in line with this and while I wish it was less, at least we know that we are not asking for anything above and beyond what most municipal municipalities are required to have in order to be efficient, so.
And we'll just mention that this is part of a process, right? So these are just the initial estimates from the architects who have put you know, blocks on a piece of paper at this point. So in in the capital improvements budget, in the in the budget that we will take a look at later tonight, we do have a full design of the Public Works Facility to happen in in twenty twenty-three. And so with the with that information and the actual design done, that work will be competitively bid. And you know, that's when we'll find out the actual actual costs.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. That will take us to agenda item six B, which is the quarterly extraterritorial CSM update. Uh, yeah, thanks. I'm gonna, I'm gonna stop the share so we can see everybody online here real quick. So as council may recall, with these CSMs, we have a three-mile boundary that is within our purview for review of land divisions. The ban from one and a half miles to three miles has been delegated to the city manager myself to approve those in-house instead of coming through the planning commission city council. But in return, we've committed to giving you a quarterly update of those that come through the door. So that's what you have before you. I believe there's only one that we've had in the last quarter. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have regarding that, but this is more just an information exercise than anything else. No, no need for approvals or anything like that, I don't think so. Thank you very much.
Perfect, thank you.
Agenda item seven is resolutions and ordinances. Seven A is review and possible action relating to a resolution adopting the twenty twenty-three annual budget and setting the property tax levy for the city of Fort Atkinson. And setting the property tax levy for the city of Fort Atkinson.
Thank you. Um, I have a few slides here that I will. Have to pull up. Okay. Okay, so, uh, tonight, uh, we have the proposed twenty twenty three operating budget and the twenty twenty three to twenty twenty eight capital improvements plan. Uh, we did hold a public hearing on, um. November first at the last city council meeting, uh, without any, um, public engagement. So. Um, just some changes from the last budget document that was published on our website and reviewed, uh, in for the public hearing. We have certified levies from all the taxing jurisdictions. Jefferson County is certifying their levy tonight. Um, are the charts and tables outlining the mill rates are now complete and in our budget document, excuse me. Our map of our, the transportation fund project is included in section J, which our transportation fund, our final tid. Uh, increment revenue is included and then the requested actions tonight. Are are threefold. Uh, there's three resolutions on the agenda. Uh, they all require separate action. We have adopting of the twenty twenty three budget and setting the property tax levy. We have confirming the total levy and determining the mill rate. Uh, note that this does not include the school levy tax credit. We can talk. Um, I'll talk a little bit more about that later and then adopting the twenty twenty three schedule of fees. So at the last meeting, uh, we didn't talk much about the, um, capital improvements budget for twenty twenty three. So I did outline it. I won't go through everything individually. It is in the budget document along with explanations of of all these projects. I don't know. Okay, um, so a few of these, um, I'll, I'll talk about funding in in a minute as well for all these, but we. These are all the things that we are going, staff is going to come to the council and ask for further authorization. Uh, you know, potentially late this year and and throughout twenty twenty three as, um, as items. Uh, as items for for projects that we will be doing. Um, okay, so we've got some here. Oh, guys. Okay.
It's okay.
Hit your button once or twice. Or the other one, try the other one. And then hit well. That's somebody who's had this happen.
I can't find my cursor here. There. Okay, sorry about that. Okay. Okay, so continuing on with the twenty twenty three CIP, um, projects, we have our transportation fund. We've got a Whitewater Avenue, uh, the city's share of that project. We've got some sidewalk and bike paths planned. Our annual street reconstruction program, our street rehab, and then some, um, city share of the planning. And design work that is, uh, involved with Riverside Drive. Uh, as mentioned in the previous presentation, we have our our new facility design for our public works operations. We also have a wing plow attachment and then two trucks, uh, two new plow trucks, which. Were actually, um, with, uh, part of the twenty twenty two borrowing. Um, that will hopefully be purchased if we can get the equipment. Uh, additional items, we've got a couple of things in the aquatic center. We've got our parks facility needs assessment. Um, uh, women are the women's bathroom remodel and the senior center. Um, a project in the mu- at the museum. If you've been there recently, I'm sure you've noticed that that, um, the sidewalk in front of the front door has sunk quite a bit. So we're there and fix that. Um, we've got some HVAC upgrades and computer replacement in the library and then, uh, some equipment in the wastewater. Wastewater utility. Oh my gosh. Sorry. Got some water projects. Uh, let's see if I can get this to work. Do you think we need a new battery in this mouse maybe? Okay, sorry about that. Got some water utility projects, uh, listed there. We've got our storm, a couple of stormwater, um. Project as well as a LEFAC and then a new taxi vehicle. Again, if we can get a vehicle, that would be the city's. Uh, city's portion of that. So our total, um, total twenty twenty three CIP projects and purchases, it's about three point two million dollars. You can see all of our different revenue sources to make that work. So we've got two hundred and eleven thousand from our general fund levy. We've got, uh, four hundred and fifty four thousand from our twenty two twenty three borrowing that we did earlier in twenty twenty two. Seven hundred and ten thousand in the transportation fund, which includes general fund levy and our vehicle registration fees. We've got about thirty two thousand nine hundred dollars coming from ARPA. Uh, then the library trust and the museum trust are paying for their projects. Water utility, wastewater utility and sewer utility are paying for for those projects as well. Uh, and just to quickly, um, talk about some major projects coming up into the future. Uh, the the twenty twenty four to twenty twenty eight, uh, five year capital improvements project plan. This is also included in the budget. Uh, approval of the budget document does not necessarily approve all of these, uh, individual items. It's more of just. Ex, you know, planning out ahead and making sure that everybody understands, uh. The needs, uh, for the future. So we have some of the major projects included here, including that public works facility. Our, um, mobile radios in the fire department, uh, you know, fire ambulance, public works, equipment replacement, you know, ongoing and expensive, right? I mean, we all know that that equipment isn't getting any cheaper and we'll continue to to plan ahead. Uh, for replacement, um, as we as we need to. Uh, our aquatic center is is aging. It's it's a, you know, thirty four plus years old at this point, and so there's going to be some things that need to be replaced in there to keep it in working order. We have, uh, multiple, uh, road construction projects. Um, we will continue to do our our annual street program. And then also plan, uh, for some of our connecting highway, uh, projects, including Riverside Drive in twenty twenty six. The library will need a new sorting machine, uh, at some point in the next couple of years and it is, uh, Eric. Um, Robinson and I have had this conversation a lot. It's a, it's a very expensive piece of equipment. Uh, and as well as a wastewater utility, uh, potential, uh, solar project, uh, out on the site there. Um. So those are just a few of the things. Uh, last, uh, meeting, uh, we talked about full-time employees. I did not have the right chart, so I corrected it and brought you the right chart. So, uh, this, uh, twenty twenty three reflects a hundred full-time employees with the city. And that, uh, includes the fourteen additional staff members hired from the public safety referendum, including those two additional sworn police officers, six. Paramedic firefighters and six AMT, um, advanced emergency medical technician firefighters. Again, our budget summary document, this has not changed from the public hearing, but, uh, we did note the the difference there between the twenty twenty two and the twenty twenty three. Tax levy, uh, and that is due to, uh, the public safety referendum. Additional the borrowing that occurred in twenty two, paying, starting to pay that back. And then our, uh, twenty two thousand dollars of additional levy permitted by the state statutes and their levy, uh, limitations. So we have, uh, both mill rate charts. Uh, the blue chart includes the city's mill rate per one thousand dollars of assessed value. For the last ten years, you can see that it is an increase this year at nine dollars and ninety one cents per one thousand dollars of value. Um, a couple of reasons that that mill rate went up a lot. Um, the. The levy went up and then also our assessed value actually decreased, um, slightly about four million dollars from twenty twenty one. Um, and to that end, included in the budget is a intermarket update, which will bring us back into compliance as far as our, um. Assessment ratio goes, we're at about seventy four percent. Uh, we are assessing at about seventy four percent of the, uh, actual, uh, market value in the city. So then the, uh, orange chart is the total mill rate per one thousand dollars of assessed value, including all taxing jurisdictions. Uh, it does look like a really substantial increase in, but I will note that the twenty twenty two. Uh, total mill rate does not include the school levy tax credit. So the twenty twenty, twenty twelve to twenty twenty one numbers do include the credit. And that credit can be up to a two dollar decrease per one thousand dollars of assessed value. So, uh, the mill rate breakdown per one thousand dollars of assessed value, again, this does not include the school levy tax credit. You can see the blue portion is the school district, the green portion is the city. The yellow portion is the technical college district and the orange portion is, um, Jefferson County. So, uh, all four taxing jurisdictions increased their levies to twenty twenty two. And you can see the percentages there, uh, listed on the left. Uh, this shows the, uh, twenty twenty two mill rate, uh, shown as a percentage by taxing jurisdiction. So you can see that the school district makes up about forty eight point six one percent of the total tax bill. The city is at thirty two point forty four. Jefferson County is at fifteen point seven five and, uh, the technical college district. Is at, uh, about three point two. So, uh, one item of note is that this this mill rate includes all of our, all of the funds that go to our tax increment. Uh, districts. So I I produced another chart just showing the. The actual, um, the levy requested. So we have the table on on the left-hand side there that shows the levy requested. That is what those four taxing jurisdictions. Uh, requested as far as what they need to operate their, um, uh, their, um. Uh, institutions in twenty twenty three. And then the gray piece is is the, um, the funds that go to the city's three existing tax increment districts. So you can see that there's a substantial amount of money. Amount of tax dollars that's going into those tids. Those are used for public infrastructure projects on those on our three existing, um, tids. The two new tids have not, um, produced any value yet, so there is not any additional. Funds going to the tids, but if, when there's questions that come up about where this money actually come from to go into those tax increment funds to pay for the projects and all of the things that happen. This, it comes from the tax levy. So as, um, as these are, as our tax increment districts close, that money will go back onto the general tax roll and all of the, um. Taxing jurisdictions, all of the mill rates will decrease when the value increases. So, uh, just a couple more, a couple more tables and then I will, um, stop talking. Uh. So we have, um, the, uh, circled there is the difference in the city's portion of the tax bill from twenty twenty two. Uh, to twenty twenty one. So you can see for a home valued at two hundred and seventy five thousand dollars, uh, it is about three hundred and thirty three dollars a year. Uh, increase for the city's portion. I will tell you that the, um. The average assessed value of of single family homes in the city of Fort Atkinson is still right around that one fifty, one sixty mark. Uh, because our assessment ratio is is low as I, as I mentioned before. Okay, so these two, uh, tables, um. The, the first table reflects the, um, estimated total tax bill, the difference between twenty twenty two and twenty twenty one. Uh, without the school levy tax credit. And then the, uh, second table with orange, uh, assumes a dollar ninety five per one thousand school levy tax credit in twenty twenty two. And includes the, um, twenty twenty one total mill rate, including that school levy tax credit. So, uh, this is, they're both estimated tables. We don't have the exact dollar amounts yet. Uh, but this is what, um, a property owner could expect, uh, for, uh, an increase. In, uh, taxes for twenty twenty two. Okay, so as I mentioned before, we have a couple of recommended actions. Uh, tonight, there's three resolutions on the agenda. We have, uh, adoption of the, um, annual budget, setting the property tax levy. Um, confirming that total tax levy and, um, determining the mill rate. And then, uh, the resolution adopting the twenty twenty three, uh, schedule of fees. So I'd be happy to answer. Uh, any questions about the budget? Or anything else that I can help with?
Feel like we've hashed this out a lot over the last few sessions, so I I don't. Really have anything to add, but I have, I applaud the work and everything that's been presented and. I know it's not an easy process to go through with, um. To so many outside factors determining what we have to work with, but, uh. I appreciate the information that was presented tonight.
Great, thank you.
I was gonna say the same thing as Mason, that I think between our workshop and the number of meetings and the public hearing, I think we've. We've all probably asked most of the questions that we had. Um, I just wanted to add, I have had a few residents reach out to me since the public hearing that we had two weeks ago where this information was presented. Couple with some specific questions or concerns they had about a couple of things, but it was really. Interesting to see that every single one of the four people who reached out made a comment about that this is the most. Thorough and transparent and easily readable budget that that they have ever remembered looking at for the city. So. Um, a lot of credit to to our city manager and her team, um, for making it a very useful. Public facing document that that I think makes it very clear to anyone and everyone who would review it exactly. Where the money is going. So even though, you know. To to hear that from people who also are in the same email expressing concerns about certain things in it. Um, I just, I think that that says a lot about the changes that have been made to the process.
Well, I never look forward to the next day after doing things like this, because this will inevitably be a headline in media this, uh, this evening and or tomorrow. I do encourage that all of our residents reach out to us, um. Understanding tax levies and and what we are levying to help run a city is not an easy process. Um, in fact, of the five of us, it it takes a collective mind sometimes for us to even be able to explain it thoroughly. So. Um, if there are questions from our residents, please do not hesitate to reach out to us in a civil manner. And we will work on figuring out how to answer your questions to the best of our abilities, because it is not easy to put a budget together. That's what I have to say on that. So. I would entertain a motion.
I move to approve the resolution adopting the twenty twenty three annual budget and setting the property tax levy for the city of Fort Atkinson, Jefferson County, Wisconsin.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Uh, this will be a roll call vote.
Councilman Becker.
Aye.
Councilman Hartwick.
Aye.
Councilman Johnson.
Aye.
Councilman Schultz.
Aye.
President Shear.
Aye. That motion carries, takes us to seven B, which is the review and possible action relating to a resolution confirming the total levy for taxing jurisdictions in the city of Fort Atkinson and determining the mill rate. Which we have just gone over.
Uh, I move to approve the resolution confirming the toll levy for taxing jurisdictions in the city of Fort Atkinson and determining the mill rate.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. This will be another roll call vote.
Councilman Becker.
Aye.
Councilman Hartwick.
Aye.
Councilman Johnson.
Aye.
Councilman Schultz.
Aye.
President Shear.
Aye, that motion carries. And then seven C, which is the possible action relating to a resolution establishing the twenty twenty three schedule of fees for the city of Fort Atkinson.
I I'll just mention a couple of things. You've got, you've got two resolutions in the packet here. One is the draft resolution. Um, that, uh, shows the fees in twenty twenty two and the fees in twenty twenty three. So you can see exactly what, um, staff is proposing that changes. I, uh, the. The finance committee did review the draft, um, fee resolution, not free resolution, as is in my memo. On September thirteenth, there were a couple of changes, uh, from that document that, um, are in, um, the document tonight. So everything that's highlighted in yellow. Were proposed changes from twenty twenty two, and then there's a few things highlighted in orange that represent changes from. The fee resolution reviewed by the finance committee on September thirteenth. And these were all recommended, um, by the staff that is in charge of of administering them. And I will also mention that, um. Oh, that's one other thing I wanted to. Uh, that the revenues associated with the increases of fees in these fees are incorporated into the twenty twenty three budget document. So with that, I would, uh, be happy to answer any questions about specific fees that have changed. Uh, and, uh, just recommend that the council adopt the resolution establishing the twenty twenty three, uh, schedule of fees for the city of Fort Atkinson.
I was just gonna add and and certainly correct me if I'm wrong, but I know from our finance committee meeting that as we were kind of going through things, the majority of. The items that were chosen for an increase, I think a lot of that came from taking a better assessment of the. taking a better assessment of the staff time that is put into any work or, or follow up and paperwork and things like that involved with these things and, and placing a little bit more of, of an accurate dollar amount on, on the staff time investment to make some of these things.
Yeah, that, that's a great point. And, and thank you for bringing that up. This, we do internally reviewed all of these fees. It's not arbitrary. They are, they are justified. We have backup information for most, for all of them. A lot of that was presented at the finance committee in September, including our, our building inspection fees. Those are, a lot of those increased from previous years. Those are all identified in 2021 is something that we really did need to look at. And our building inspector zoning administrator really did a great job analyzing some, our fees as well as fees in other communities, our size as well as fees for other communities in our county. And then the impact of those increase in fees on certain projects. So I really did a thorough analysis of, of the impact of those. And it wasn't substantial. In fact, I, I told him to make them higher, but you know, we were going with his recommendation at this point. But we will continue to take a look at these. I do not anticipate, you know, grand increases annually in any of these fees. But we do just have to continue to review them and understand that this is one of the only revenue sources that the city has that we can control. Number one, and number two, that these are, these aren't taxes, right? These are people choosing people or, you know, developers or, or whomever choosing to do things that require extra staff time. And so that is above and beyond what should be expected to be paid by the general taxpayer. And that's why we have, that's why we establish these fees for these additional services.
I think the last finance committee mean we had a very good discussion about this and, and I'm, I'm glad this review was done because we, we do have a responsibility to make sure that staff time and, and resources are being at least covered by these fees that are being assessed. And I, I know we had a good discussion about some of the you know, more ancillary fees like related to parks and rec and things like that. And I think, I think the increases that, that we talked about were reasonable, but still keep us very competitive with, with what we know is being charged by, you know, other facilities and other communities in the area.
I move to approve the resolution establishing the 2023 schedule of fees for the city of Fort Atkinson, Jefferson County, Wisconsin.
Second.
We have a motion and multiple seconds. This is not a roll call vote. Excuse me. All of those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? That motion carries. Agenda item eight is reports of officers, boards and committees. Eight A is the city manager's report.
Thank you. So our clerk treasurer's office administered another successful election last week with almost 5,000 voters. The process was very smooth. The results were accurate. So I thank you to Michelle and her team and our parks team for setup and take down and all of our election workers and all of our voters for, for coming out and making that a very successful day. And while we just wrapped up the general election, note that local elections are just around the corner. Candidates for city council can start circulating paperwork starting on December first. And packets will be available in the clerk treasurer's office starting the last week of November. I also want to thank all of our city staff who supported the chambers holiday parade. So we had a lot of employees actively engaged to ensure the safety of our community. And I want to thank Lieutenant Hefty for coordinating the city's safety efforts and coordinating with the chamber to ensure safety of all of our, of all of our residents for that, for that wonderful event. I would like to announce that the city has extended an offer for a, for the city electrician position. And Nick Armstrong has accepted that and we're pleased to welcome to him to our team on November 28th. The members of the 2022, 2023 class from project lead came to the municipal building on November 9th. It was great to connect with some future leaders in our community and introduce them to all of the various opportunities for community service through engagement on city boards, commissions and committees. So I hope some of them do pursue city council or boards, commissions and committees and, and be engaged and involved in what we do here. On November 10th, we held our first all staff meetings for city staff. I, I believe these are the first that have been held. This is an effort to continue to communicate internally with, with staff as we have been doing externally for the past year or so. We've been really trying to tell, tell the message of what the city does externally. And we also want to continue to keep our staff informed of what we're doing internally and, and get feedback. And we will continue those efforts in the future. And I also, and I'll just note that there's a fifth Tuesday in November, so we, the city council will not meet again until Tuesday, December 6th. And I hope everybody has a happy and healthy Thanksgiving.
Thank you. Agenda item nine is unfinished business. This evening we have none. Ten is new business. Ten A is the review and possible action related to wastewater utility phase two improvements. Project change order number eight and project update.
I'm just getting this going for you. I made the mistake of trying to think I could see this.
I have never understood when people take their glasses off to see something better. I don't understand it, Andy.
Here, I was gonna try and bring the mood and say if anybody had leftovers after Thanksgiving, they could invite me, but Andy beat me to the punch. He took them out of the box at the bank or something, right? So tonight, I'm here to review change order number eight. I'll be up here for just a short time and then Kevin is here from Donahue and he will be here to go over the change order. It's such, it's a accumulation of, of items that is going back even into late last year. There were smaller things, some are larger items. There are sixteen items altogether on this change order. The net addition is, is $6,725. Made up again, some credits, you know, then a lot of additions that are, were smaller items and things like that. So Kevin is here to do that, to go over that. And then he will also then give you a quick project update that Andy put up on the screen. Just to show you kind of where we are going over a year now into construction. And hopefully in a, maybe in the spring, we'll actually be able to have you out. When there's a little less mud around and a few more things done.
Right. So before we hop into any of the presentation and go over the change order items, kind of similar to the last few that I presented here, this is less related to bankruptcies, which is nice. We don't have any more of those so far. We've been able to hold out for a couple more months. Like Paul mentioned, sixteen total items. I didn't actually summarize how many credits or, or adds to the project. This has been kind of a running tally of smaller items really since construction started even to that extent or than over a year and a half ago now. The majority of which I would say are less than $10,000 is a couple higher, higher dollar amounts in there. But for the most part, so I'll just go quickly through these. I'm not going to read through all the verbiage, but I'll take questions afterwards. Just a brief summary on each one. So item number one, that was primarily a repair and performance upgrade at the plant that wasn't included in the original scope. So that was just kind of an added scope item. Two was a reassignment to the rehab contractor was just better aligned scope with who was actually doing the work. Three was a detailed design item that popped up, very small dollar item, just small thing that didn't reach the level of complete design at the time. Four, that is actually an item that grew out of operations needs. Once we had equipment installed, owned it a lot easier to remove some components if we had some removable railing instead of fixed railing. Five was a reconciliation between plans and specs. We showed ten spots or whatever it was and specified seven. So it's an item that would have been included in the bid amount. They bid the specs, not the plan. So they worked together just to basically a reconciliation of the budget again for their bid work. Six, similar to five, same reasoning. Seven was a reduction in having to pull umpteen wires between panel A and panel B. Instead of just letting those two communicate with a simple ethernet cable, reduction in complexity that works for everybody. Let's see, where are we at here? Five, eight, we get put in a larger skylight at structure 10 where the new screens are going in. That was a benefit to the contractor, allowing to, making the installation easier and also for removal for the city in the future. Mildly larger skylight, I think a total of a one foot 10 wider allowed removal of that equipment without having to take some gearboxes and motors off that was possible without it. But is a heck of a lot easier now to just make the skylight a little bigger rather than having to deal with it later. Cruising down through railing height number nine, that was an item that came out of having to go through the replacement cover that we did back a while back with the the bankruptcy of the cover supplier. The new cover had mildly different edge characteristics, so we had to change the railing type. Ten and eleven are credit items that were taken out in various areas on some piping. That wasn't necessary, just was an extension of the project specifications that upon, you know, detailed review during construction, we didn't need to do it. So we took it out and took the credit. Twelve was an added scope item that wasn't originally in the project. Kind of got to looking, had equipment on site to be able to do some blasting and paint work. That just made sense to do while they were there. So we did that. Thirteen was a coating system change. This is kind of similar to item number two. The specified system is workable, is fine. Coating supplier has newer products available that were advertised to work better. We've used them in other projects since they've come out. Really it was a product release since the time of bidding that we kind of believe in. So we modified that product to, to take that better, better material than area. Fourteen is added cost. So we had an allowance value specified in the bid to do a tank rehab alongside the main, main building. We had an estimated value at the time of bidding of about $50,000. The exact condition of that tank was unknown. So to make it fair bidding practice, we put the allowance in and then had to reconcile the actual cost of that work. Once it was completed, it came in over budget. The condition was worse than we initially thought it was. Fifteen, we added additional diffusers in the aeration basin swing zones. That was based on operations feedback from Paul and his staff. After we put one side of that basin back in service under low flow, high load conditions, we saw some operational issues. So because we have some time yet, based on the I think it was change order five where we actually had to replace the aeration equipment. While they're procuring that, we asked them to add some additional equipment in those areas to overcome those operational issues. And then sixteen is a credit back, similar to the previous allowance item I mentioned. In the bid, we included an allowance for replacement of unsuitable materials under buildings. So we don't know exactly what's in all areas. So we include an allowance to allow removal and replacement of poor soils. We didn't encounter any poor soil, so that entire allowance was available to come back to the city in full dollar for dollar. So near the end of my memo, there is a total there of enacted changes to date of about 336,914. Those are change orders to date, not including this effort. The total adders in this list of sixteen items is just over 100,103,055. Proposed deducts in this change are 96,330. That nets out to the plus 67,25 that Paul mentioned. Which takes us to a project total so far of 343,639. We've previously discussed contingency values along the way. Those numbers take us to a remaining contingency of about $325,000, so we're basically halfway through the contingency. All noted in the presentation, but I think it is important to note that between the digester cover replacement and the aeration equipment, that's almost $300,000 of the contingency that we've used, which came about because of bankruptcies. The remainder of the project is only used about $50,000, which on a thirteen and a half million dollar capital project is, is good so far. So that's the kind of brief, brief-ish, I would say, summary of those items. Any questions? I can go into further detail if you'd like.
So you feel pretty confident with the, what, forty eight percent of that contingency fund that remains?
Yeah, in relation to how much work the contractor's completed so far, we're, I believe we're close to seventy five or eighty percent build out. We're, we're outpacing that total again. With very few areas of unknown items left. We're no longer working underground. Everything, most of our interconnections to the existing system are pretty well known. They've got a couple of update slides. I do know of one ongoing item that we'll have to address with somewhat well rehab. It's concrete surface work that, again, we just don't know how bad it is until we get into it. That, that we will have an adder coming for that, but it's, it should be relatively mild. And it's dollar for dollar, we're doing it on a time and material basis.
I feel like I can speak for all of us when I say thank you for not coming with sixteen change orders.
Yes.
This is nicer.
Yes, it's a, we try to do these as much as possible where we don't have large dollar amounts or very targeted focus areas and we have a group of these. So we'll have one more kind of likely sum up item at the end of the project where we'll close out the remainder of the allowances. We do have some stashed credits still. We have a few ongoing adder items. Working to balance those as best as we can, but for the most part, we're on pace.
Last time you were here, you brought us a credit. And while this one isn't a credit, I cannot complain about sixteen different changes only costing $6,725 and still having forty eight percent contingency remaining. So this is being very well managed. Thank you.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
I'll, I'll move to approve the change order number eight for phase two of the wastewater utility facility project for the net cost of $6,725.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All of those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? This motion carries.
Okay, now we'll move into this little presentation if you're together for you all. You guys have mentioned before, kind of your efforts in, in renewing city assets and a focus on investing in your own facilities. I think this is a pretty good update. Some of the photos are relatively striking of what, you know, almost a year and a half ago, the thirteen and a half million dollar project, a large project for anyone to undertake. But I think you'll see both now and as we get some open house type items and get some folks through the facility of what you're really investing in. That's really been a pretty good project so far. So just some notable items to get back in the swing of things. So way back in March of 21, I noticed to proceed for the project was given with the substantial completion date of April 28th of 23. So we're about four months out from that date. So it's kind of hard to believe, but it's been a, you know, over two year process back three years when he really considered going back to the start of design. Along the way, because of the cover delay and replacement, we've switched out substantial completion of that work for later in 23, late October with final completion date of December 8th. So that final completion date wraps up everything. So really the, it's the scope of the project minus the digesters will be done by April per the contract. And everything will be done by the end of December, middle of December. Reminder that the original bid value was 13,385. It was a good timing. I mean, March of 2020 was right before Sky, you know, prices really took off. We've seen rampant volatility and high prices in the construction market. So really you guys have, really have gotten an excellent value out of that bid. We've had eight change orders to date with a total increase of 343,639 that incorporates this change that was just approved. Like I mentioned, the digestory cover and narration bankruptcies, I'm calling them amounted in almost $290,000 of add, which leaves only $54,000 or point four percent of your bid price. On capital projects of this size, anywhere under five percent of change orders is kind of your industry standard. Donahue shoots to beat that by a wide margin. And we've accomplished that so far on this project. So it's a testament to your staff's effort in our design process as well as just having complete design plans and specifications to really move through things. History, a lot of small text here. This kind of summarizes everything we've done so far. So there's, there's no real time scales to this. So it's, it's not a very engineering slide, but a lot of words that she But a lot of words that you can't see very much, so back in March, we, you know, opened bids and gave contracted north to proceed. Through the summer of twenty twenty-one, a lot of excavation and site work began work in the filter building, which is your asset to remove phosphorus and meet that upcoming permit limit. Through the winter of twenty-one, into the spring of this year, we really enclosed that filter building, completed the masonry precast work, got that building weather tight. And then moved into mechanical and electrical work. Back up and say, I do use the word we loosely, I'm not out there swinging a hammer. In the summer of twenty-two, they started some work in for the screening headworks area. Got some foundations prepped and ready, so they'd be able to move on to that later. Also started rehab of a one of the primary clarifiers. There were two scope to do that and also started the influent bypass, which has got the hair on everybody's neck kind of up, but things have gone very well so far. It's been, you know, started in August, it's ongoing now. We'll continue through cold weather until that headworks building is really done, so it's it's a pretty large effort. In August. They finished the filter building, completed the performance test for the filtration system that passed with very little modification, so that's been certified good. Really started moving that influence bypass where we took the existing pumping systems, grinding systems offline, skipped them and started the rehab in that area of the facility. This fall, the effort has been largely focused on rehabbing the second primary clarifier. Doing rehab and demolition within that wet well. Completed another final clarifier. Which they've really done pretty, pretty good work in getting quickly moving through those clarifiers and getting that work done. And then they've started working inside the screening building as well, so they've got masonry walls up, precast ceiling on. Roofing is on, so once that masonry is done, we'll be able to throw some temporary doors in and really be pretty weather tight soon. So that kind of leaves, what do we have left? The rest of this winter into early, early spring, late winter. They've got one more clarifier to rehab, which they're about halfway through right now. That's that should be complete in the next three weeks or so. Continuing to work in that screening area, doing mechanical, electrical work. There's an area of the project which really hasn't been touched a whole lot yet, is the aeration blowers were replacing two blowers in that area. It kind of lives on its own, separate from a lot of the other efforts so far, so that should kind of proceed once they get out of the clarifiers. Through the spring, late winter and spring, they'll come back to the aeration basins, work on the west half, once the the new aeration equipment supplier gets their drawings completed and delivers that equipment, still delayed. And then we'll reach substantial completion for everything but the digesters, for those that aren't familiar with construction contracts, substantial completion is the point at which we can generate a punch list for the project. And all the functionality of the project is actually to the point where things are functioning as intended in automatic mode and all modes available. And there's just small punch list items left over, small corrections. Then through the summer and fall, they'll go through basically a a small project in and of itself at the digesters. And then looking for if I can't final completion of everything on the job in early December. So a busy year yet, but we've accomplished a lot in a little over eighteen months. Any questions on schedule and timing? Okay, so we've got kind of a no more words, all pictures, so it's my kind of the show. A lot of before and after type photos taken from nearly similar vantage points, we can kind of see what was and what what is now. So this is our old filter building, which, you know, wasn't much to look at. And now we've got a relatively large masonry style building with that houses everything related to the filter process, so that's the filters themselves. This is a shot of the interior. We've got a nice plaque there right inside when you walk in the door, so that effort has been memorialized nicely. Have you had a few of the components? So there's the opposite view, the the door they've seen there, so this is a pretty silly looking photo because all you can see is conduit and railing. But for the most part, you know, flow comes in, gets pumped up to this channel, flows through some tankage this way, the filters are in the tanks back here. And then flow goes back out under the floor through some piping. So it's kind of a a kind of a contained flow within the building. But this is where all of the, basically all of the phosphorus removal that needs to be done chemically happens now. So this is what's gonna get your work done that isn't happening out in narration basins. In order to get that done, there's some submerged pumps in here, discharging up through this piping. I'll kind of cruise through this stuff, but I, you know, the emphasis here is to take a look at the amount of stuff in the photo. There's a lot of railing, a lot of conduit, a lot of piping. It's a pretty efficient use of space. There's a lot of dollars and value packed into a relatively small building to get a lot of work done. The disc filters, the stars of the show in this this building, these are from Aqua Aerobics in in Rockford, Illinois. They're an outside in type filter, so this basin fills with water. This is the same shot before and after. These, this kind of bluish area are individual cassettes, kind of like a a stack of CDs. As the as the tank fills with water, flow goes through the media into a center tube and out. So the phosphorus removal here actually occurs by first chemically getting it out of solution into a filterable sized particle and then catching it on that media, and then that's that's how we're getting the phosphorus out of the water. There's some associated pumps and piping equipment with this process, nothing too fancy here, just to support equipment. I mentioned some chemical removal, so there's a polymer system attached. There's actually another skid and tank behind me here in this photo, but again, this is where when when Paul comes up with this chemical budget that he provides you with polymer systems, you're seeing some of it right here. It's all necessary to make this this go. There's a lot of support systems to these filtration systems. Perichloride system works in tandem with polymer. Doesn't look like much this pit, this is actually a containment area down below, so the six tens and other five feet or so. The large, large tank will allow purchase of bulk chemical, so they can take full four thousand gallon shipments. Saves on costs, efficiency, instead of taking in totes, we can take large shipments of bulk of bulk chemical. Primary clarifiers, really not much to see unless you know what you're looking at. Two circular tanks, this one looks just like this one. This is after rehab, so you've got new, new mechanisms, new bridge. Everything within this tank was completely gutted down the sidewalls and floor and then reconstructed. So this is brand new equipment that should have a full service life again, not a rehab. So the biggest change that was made through the project was this is the old clarifiers on the left here. This is the the trough that carries water out of the tank. So flow used to previously come over both sides of the weir and go out in the that that weir was in board four or five feet from the wall edge. This was converted over to a stainless steel trough that's you can see here flow is coming now just over one side and out. That provides better access to the weirs for staff. And they can basically wash those wears down from the edge of the tank and get what you'd be able to wash them without having to enter the tankage or or go from both sides there. Aeration basins, these two, these two walls are new, gate is here for separation. This is an expansion of where Paul and his staff are able to remove phosphorus biologically without chemical. So we've changed the size of the tankage, which prevent, you know, changes your retention times, how long a drop of water stays in each portion of the tank. It gives him a lot more process control and and the ability to give the bugs a happy environment to do the work that we want them to do. Here's a bunch of electrical equipment that was installed as part of the project. It looks fairly benign until you see the invoices for how much a stainless steel box costs. And then you'll see that this is a pretty large investment sitting right here that that will live on for a long while there. Final clarifier, this is, it's it's much less impressive when you see it in in print here, but the day that these were picked off was mildly stressful and pretty satisfying. Once it sat back down to the ground, this is a seventy foot diameter aluminum dome that they lifted off in one piece. So that just provided access to the clarifiers to actually do the same kind of gotten removal as what we did at the primaries. But it's it's an interesting day when you see guys picking seven thousand pound, you know, basically walks around. Here's the interior, you can see now with the cover off, same style constructions, what we did at the primaries, that single direction we're mounted to the out, you know, outside wall with the with the laundry area. And then a full mechanism replacement, so complete removal and replacement of all the old old mechanicals, which were correctly from wrong, Paul, but primaries and finals were native to ninety-two. So very little work done since then. Don't twenty or thirty, yeah, thirty years later now from ninety-two. So definitely service life was was used up and ready for replacement. Here's those aeration blowers we were talking about, so the N two here being replaced. One has been taken out, the other will be taken out when they have staffing to to meet their construction timeline. They're obligated, once they take the second clarify or the second blower out to have that work done within thirty days. So we have a limited timeframe where the plan is, has a reduced aeration capacity. This will improve efficiency. These are old multi-stage centrifugals, which are just not very efficient at what they do. Will replace them with high speed blower or high speed turbos, which do the same work, but with less energy. Influence pumping, kind of a hard to see photo here, but this was actually prior to the phase one project even in twenty twenty. So this is back from twenty nineteen, used to have three, three influence pumps. One still had actually drive shaft and and motor up at the surface level. That's been replaced with four influence pumps that are dry pit submersibles. So even if we're, even if the worst were to happen somehow in this lower level were to become flooded, these pumps will continue to operate basically regardless of what goes on. More efficient and four pumps for added capacity and more redundancy. So this was that wet well rehab that I was telling you about. We do have a ongoing change happening here, mostly just related to additional rehab that needed to be done. So what you're seeing on the left hand side of the photo is, this is down in the actual wet well where your raw waste untreated are coming in from the sewer system. You can see these areas that look kind of blackish, that's a old coating system that was on there to protect the concrete, it largely failed in many areas. It was probably original to seventy-one, so it for sure has had its service life. And you can see where the concrete, the paste is kind of eaten back and you can see some exposed aggregates in areas left untended. This will just continue to eat back until you have real structural issues. It's not going to resolve itself, it's not going to stop. So as we got into this work. The specified work would have stopped at a at a light sand blast for the most part. We increased that to a more aggressive blast and then a build back layer prior to coating, so it kind of reestablishes what used to be. This is just more pictures of blasted areas. You can see, you know, the the scale of this is kind of hard to tell, but an indentation like this is probably close to a half an inch deep and about an inch around. And then there are some larger areas of failed areas where this is probably two to three inches deep and six inches around. So some issues. What that means is that we come back after this has been blasted, this is routinely half inch to three quarters of an inch. Indentations. After that prep coat, we're basically back back to a flat surface. It's a epoxy modified cementitious material that bonds both to the wall and provides a good base to to put a new epoxy coating system on. Here's a in progress photo from today. You can see on the left is that new coating going on and on the right is just blasted areas, so you can see there's actually a physical difference there. Similar to the filter building, so this is that screening area. This was the wet well in which we're doing that rehab work. Nothing here before, in an effort to save a tremendous amount of capital, capital cost upfront during design. We've constructed the screening area over the old wet well. Rather than building a whole new building that would have to extend both forty feet down and twenty feet up. So it's a pretty significant difference in use of assets. This building, the face brick is going on this week, should be on, should be done by middle of next week or so. And then really, we're just working inside at that point. This is the interior of the building as it sits now. So this is a a precast plank area, the the two large influence screens, which protect the pumps will be up out of here at at an angle. This is that opening that we had for the skylight. Size revision, we got mildly wider, so those screens can be rotated up and pulled directly out through the roof, should they need to be. That's it, so it's a, you know, probably doesn't feel brief to everybody, but it's over eighteen months of effort. Probably, I can't remember what the last P app was, Paul, but I think we're we've got to be coming up on eight million, eight or nine million complete, if not more than that. So I think we're right about that eighty percent complete point. A lot of work at the digesters, but really a tremendous amount of of value instilled in the facility. Lot of upgrades that are many years due that have gone relatively well, so. Any questions on the project at all? I'm happy to take them at any time. Like Paul said, once we get stuff, get everybody cleaned up and out of there a little bit, we'd happy to have everybody through and and give you the detailed tour. So thanks for the time. If you have any questions, I'll take them.
I'll just say that it's a, it's good to have you on board.
Well, thanks. Appreciate that.
Thank you very much. Plus you keep us entertained, so.
Agenda item number eleven miscellaneous, there we go, none this evening. Twelve is claims appropriations and contract payments. Twelve A is the review and possible action relating to the verified claims presented by the Director of Finance and Authorization of Payment.
I move to approve the list of verified claims presented by the Director of Finance and authorized payment.
We have a motion and a second. This will be a roll call vote.
Councilman Becker?
Aye.
Councilman Hartwick?
Aye.
Councilman Johnson?
Aye.
Councilman Schultz?
Aye.
President Shear?
Aye, my motion carries. Gender item thirteen is adjournment.
Move to adjourn.
Back in motion and a second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? This meeting is adjourned.